Good evening. I would like to call to order the school board meeting for July 26, 2022. Let the record reflect that all school board members, board attorney, board clerk, and superintendent are present. I have the invocation and pledge tonight. We received an email yesterday that just really struck me about how much of a choice district we are and that we don't focus solely on career-ready. We focus on whatever the right path for each student and each family member is. And I wanted to share this for the community to hear, that we don't always celebrate, or we don't always hear the celebrations of the kids that go through the CTE program. We celebrate our magnus. We celebrate our, you know, high-achieving students. We celebrate those that are going to college, and we celebrate our athletes. But this past year, we received information from our Lyman High School that the teacher over that program is so extremely proud of all of his students, but wanted to highlight and share that we had three students who went to a contest. One was Joseph Toscano, who placed second overall in the state of Florida in automotive service technician challenge, Jonathan Clark, who placed fourth, and Levi Sininger, who placed sixth in Florida, all over, sixth of the entire state in mechanical lights and repair. Additionally, he shared that Christopher Wolf attended the 2022 Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Championship in Atlanta, Georgia. Before the championship got underway, Chris got to meet personally with the U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Condona and Amy Lloyd, U.S. Senate Assistant Secretary for the Office of Career, Technical, and Adult Education. Mr. Condona was an automotive student during high school in Connecticut, and Chris was able to have a really nice discussion with the secretary and represented Lyman really well. During the championship, Chris competed in automotive maintenance and light repair, where he went on to win second place in the country. This is the highest level a Lyman student has finished in the national, in the nation in at least 25 years. While this student, while he was at Lyman High School, earned all of his ASE student certifications, ASR, G1 maintenance, light repair certification, and two paraprofessional level ASE certifications, A5 brakes, A4 steering suspension, and is currently working at our partner, Molinax Ford, and will be entering the Ford Asset Program. So I wanted to highlight and share that I'm, we are so proud to hear those successes. And as we start this next school year in two weeks, we wish every teacher, every student, every staff member, every family member, the best and most year ahead, and may you find the path that works best for you and run with it and allow us to help you be as successful as you want to be. So if you will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board clerk, do we have any acknowledgement forms? Okay. Any agenda modifications, superintendent?
Yes. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item.
And school board member, any agenda modifications and roll call order? Member Kraus, member Almond, member Calderon, member Sanchez, and then myself. Member Kraus?
I don't have the item number, but the project at Lawton Elementary. Are you pulling that one?
I will pull item 6.O., which is the RFQ for the construction manager at risk for Lawton. So are your...
So then I have no others. Thank you.
So are you off, you're extending an offer to sit on that RFQ?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Member Almond?
No modifications. Thank you.
Okay. Member Calderon?
No modifications, Madam Chair.
Member Sanchez?
No modifications. Thank you.
And I have no further modifications. So if I have an motion for approval of the agenda outline?
Oh, so moved? Second?
All in, any more further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Superintendent, we have recognitions?
Yes. We will get started with our Veteran of the Month, Mr. Blizzard, presented by Michael Hunter, Principal at Lyman.
This evening is my pleasure to introduce to you the SCPS Veteran of the Month for July of 2022, Sergeant Michael Blizzard from Lyman High School, engineering teacher. Mr. Blizzard, if you could come down at this time. Mr. Blizzard joined the Marines after attending Orange County Community College in Middleton, New York, who reported to Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Harris Island, South Carolina, 2nd Battalion, Platoon 2044 in March of 1977. Graduating in the top 5% of the series, approximately 280 Marines, he was promoted to Lance Corporal. He was then assigned to 30 days of recruiting duty in Middleton, New York, prior to reporting to the U.S. Army Intelligence School at Fort Huachuca, Arizona. Finishing first in his class at Fort Huachuca, he was promoted to Corporal in order to report to the S2 Intelligence, 2nd Battalion, 9th Marines, 3rd Marine Division in Okinawa, Japan. As a member of this unit, his responsibilities included collecting, recording, analyzing, processing, and disseminating information and intelligence. He participated in deployments to and exercises in three allied nations in the Western Pacific. For his work overseas, Mr. Blizzard was promoted to Sergeant prior to reporting to Headquarters Fleet Marine Force Atlantic in Norfolk, Virginia, where he was assigned to the G2 Intelligence Classified Library, where he helped to establish procedures and handling of over 5,000 documents in classified message traffic, and also the training of new personnel in those procedures. Moving to the mapping, charting, and geodesic section, he worked on the prioritization of mapping and charting materials needed to support emergency and evacuation contingency and operational plans. Returning to civilian life, Mr. Blizzard attended Virginia Tech and earned his bachelor's degree in electrical engineering, and shortly thereafter moved to Orlando to begin work as a software engineer in the simulation industry. Twelve years later, Mr. Blizzard went into education with his first assignment being Oak Ridge High School in Orange County. He came to Seminole County in 2011 and found his way to Lyman High School in 2013, where he continues to teach as a dual enrollment instructor for a Seminole State College at Lyman's Academy of Engineering. Mr. Blizzard, on behalf of Seminole County Public Schools and Lyman High School, we congratulate you and thank you Sergeant Blizzard for your service to our country.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Beeman, and esteemed board members. I have the distinct pleasure of announcing to you several of our newest elementary principals. So we will start with the newest principal of Hamilton Elementary, Mr. Adrian Fuller. Mr. Fuller is a proud graduate of Seminole County Public Schools and Florida State University. He has served our students in Seminole County as a teacher and administrator for the past 10 years, with the last five years as the assistant principal at Hamilton Elementary. Among his many fans, we have family members in attendance this evening, his wife, Jania Fuller, sons Adrian III and Austin. I think we've got too many me's here. Mother Adrian Fuller, grandmother Doris Gordon, Aunt Beverly Child, and many more. So congratulations, Mr. Fuller. Our newest principal at Highlands Elementary School is Ms. Jody Farbstein. Ms. Farbstein is beyond excited to return to Highlands Elementary, where she began her teaching career. During her 18 years as an educator in Seminole County schools, she had the opportunity to teach at Highlands, Wilson, and Castleberry Elementary Schools, and served as an instructional coach, school administration manager, and assistant principal at English Estates. She is looking forward to having an amazing school year with the student, staff, and community at Highlands Elementary, and her family member in attendance is her fiance, Chris Gonzalez. Now my pleasure to introduce the newest principal at Longwood Elementary School, Ms. Lee Jones. Lee joined the U.S. Air Force out of high school and was honorably discharged after 13 and a half years. During her time in the Air Force, she spent time as an instructor, FTE clerk, and training manager in Airman Leadership School. Lee has experienced teaching in elementary general education, exceptional student education, instructional coaching, and has been the assistant principal at Longwood Elementary for the past five years. Her family member in attendance is her husband, David Jones.
Elementary has one more. Board members and Ms. Beeman, please welcome Dr. Theresa Thacker, new principal at Redbug Elementary. Thacker earned her undergraduate and doctoral degrees from Texas A&amp;M. She served as an ESE teacher in the 504 RTI and dyslexia coordinator in the Rockwall Independent School District before moving to Florida. She's been serving in Seminole County Public Schools for the past eight years, first as an intervention specialist in the E Pathways Department, and then for the past seven years as the assistant principal at Sterling Park Elementary. And as we name these people, they can come up as well. This evening in attendance with Dr. Thacker is her husband Cooper, her adopted family. Those are here as well. Their mother Pat was a dear friend of Dr. Thacker's, who served thousands of hours as a dividend at both Sterling Park and at Redbug Elementary. Additionally, Mr. Mario Rodriguez Diller and Dr. Tina Langdon are here to celebrate with Dr. Thacker.
All right. Next up, we have the newest assistant principal at Croombs Academy of Information Technology. Please welcome Mr. Clayton Donan. Mr. Donan earned his bachelor's degree in 2002 from UCF and his master's degree from the American College of Education in 2020. He has worked at Croombs Academy of Information Technology since 2002, developing and teaching many cutting-edge technology and music classes, including game design and development, digital music and composition, steel performance ensemble, digital video production, and project management course. He was nominated as Croombs Academy Teacher of the Year twice and was selected as the Seminole County Teacher of the Year in 2022. Donan also formed and founded the CroombsCon charity, a video game community-focused charity that has raised over $66,000 for local children's hospitals. Joining him tonight is his wife Jennifer Donan, his daughter Ailyn Donan, and son Reese Donan, along with Kathy Breitenbrock and Dr. Brandon Hanshaw, his principal. Congratulations to Mr. Clayton Donan. And next up, we have the new assistant principal at Oviedo High School. Please welcome Mr. Matthew Guglielmello. Matt, did I get that pronunciation right? Did I get that pronunciation? Oh, he's busy. All right. Matthew Guglielmello is a proud product of Seminole County Public Schools and a Winter Springs High School graduate. He attended Florida State University, where he obtained a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering and a Master of Science in Math Education. He began his educational career as a math teacher at Oviedo High School. Matt taught for seven years before moving into a leadership position as the testing coordinator. During his time, he pursued a specialist degree in educational leadership at UCF and is now excited for this opportunity to work within SCPS as an assistant principal at Oviedo High School. Joining him here tonight, we have his father Keith, his mother Catherine, sister Sarah, and Dr. Trent Daniel, principal of Oviedo High School.
All right. It is my great pleasure to introduce you to your new Director of Intervention Services, Dr. Robert Vanderloop. Bachelors in English and Theater Education from the University of Wisconsin-Eauclaire, a Master's of Administrative Leadership from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, and a doctorate in Organizational Change and Leadership from the University of Southern California. Robert has spent over 19 years as a professional educator, with 14 of those years in administration as either a dean, principal, or director of pupil services in urban, suburban, and rural school districts across the state of Wisconsin. He has helped lead schools towards state and national recognition in academics, behavior, and healthy lifestyles. Robert also serves as an adjunct professor for a private university, teaching both graduate and undergraduate classes in their school of education. He is leaving us later this week to go pick up his three beautiful children, who will be joining us here in Seminole County, and his wife, who is joining our math team over That's it? There they are.
All right.
at Indian Trails. Come on. We are so happy to have him on board.
We have our school district highlights. Superintendent, if you would like to start us off?
Absolutely. We have our Focus on Student Achievement for the 2022 Assessments Update with Dr. Weizong, Dr. Cummings, and Ms. Thompson. I'll turn it over to you all.
There, that's better. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Beeman. Tonight, we are going to do an overview of Focus on Student Achievement, which is assessment updates. We're going to talk a little bit about the school grades and the district grades that were released since the last time that we had a board meeting. So Seminole County Public Schools is an A-rated district for the 21-22 school year, something that we have all worked very hard at and are very proud of. Certainly, our students, our teachers, our families, from the, from the, over the course of the last two years, have had some significant challenges that they have faced and have overcome nicely. So what you see represented on this screen are the school grades components that make up our district grade. There are 1,100 points possible in our district grade, and we earn 703, or 64% of the possible points, which makes us an A district. So we're going to talk a little bit more in depth about those school grade components. This slide represents the school grade accountability formula as it relates to both elementary, middle, high school, and the district. So these school grade components for elementary school, elementary schools have seven components. So you'll see for English Language Arch, there are 300 points possible in that area, 100 points based on students getting a Level 3 or above, 100 points based on the learning gains of all students, and then 100 points based on the learning gain of the lowest 25% performing students in the school or in the district. That applies to mathematics as well, where we see another 300 points coming from those components. In elementary school, science makes up that final component, where students' fifth-grade science assessments make up the last part of the elementary, of the elementary calculation. For middle schools, there is the math, the ELA, the math, the science, and the addition of the civics, EOC, and the middle school acceleration component that's based upon middle school students earning passing scores on EOC exams in mathematics or industry certification. For high schools, the points possible in the formula increased to 1,000, as we have the ELA, math, science, social studies, and they have a graduation rate component that is a lag component. So for this year's school grade, it was the graduation rate for the class of 21 that was factored into that, as well as college and career acceleration, which has also lagged a year. So that's the class of 21's college and career acceleration. To help you have a better understanding of how those grades are earned, the gradient scale also appears on this slide, so with the cut points and the gradient scale for that. So schools getting 62% of the points possible or higher are eligible for an A, and then you'll see the rest of those cut levels. This slide provides an overview of our performance across those instructional levels, kind of broken down by achievement levels. So as you can see in that first component, this is ELA achievement, Level 3 and above, with elementary, middle, and high. As you can see that at secondary, we are relatively consistent in terms of our Level 3 and above performance, with our elementary students being slightly ahead of that. For ELA learning gains, our elementary students had, 63% of eligible students earned a learning gain, while middle and high school are real, are in the 50s. And we can see that our ELA low 25 learning gain percentages are higher in elementary than they are in secondary, and that certainly is something that we take as a point of concern that we, that we work on every year. Math achievement is recognized as our Level 3 and above students. For high school, it's important to point out for this component that there is a significant number of students that are not represented in this calculation. Our middle school math acceleration, our acceleration process often leads to our highest-achieving mathematics students testing out of the accountability model, because they complete Algebra 1 and geometry before moving to the high schools. So not all high school mathematics students are represented in that calculation due to our focus on accelerating those students. You'll see math learning gains on there. Math learning gains are in the 60s at elementary and middle school, and a little bit below that in mathematics. We see our math low 25 learning gains, need some work as well. As we see middle school is our highest there science achievement. Our biology EOC this year was very high at 71%, and our social studies achievement at, for civics, was at 77%. So all of those components combined to be part of our district grade. Our school grade performance overall is represented on this slide, and is compared to 2019. As you're aware, in 2020, there were no assessments given and school grades were not calculated due to the pandemic. Last year, in 2021, Seminole County Public Schools opted out of school grades due to the many impacts of the pandemic on testing and certainly on learning for that year. So as we take a look at elementary, we can see in elementary that in 2019, we had 17 A schools for elementary, and we had 12 A schools in 2022. But please note that four of our elementary schools missed being an A by one percentage point, and we had three of our elementary schools missed being an A by two percentage points, and one of our C elementary schools missed a B by one point. So our distribution of grades is relatively back to where we were pre-pandemic. Middle schools were relatively stable, with only one school moving from an A to a B when compared to 2019. And for our high schools, we had, in 2019, we had three As and six Bs. Three of our high schools this year, you'll see that this year we have three As and three Bs represented on this slide, with three of our high schools receiving a grade of I because they did not meet the 95% tested requirement for eligible students.
Here you see our focus schools. These schools improved significantly over their performance in 2021. These are the schools that were under the Student and School Success Department. We really focused on standards-based instruction. We had a united vision to make sure that we moved schools. We focused really on the academics. Relationship building was also a strong component, along with leadership. So in that department, along with coaches, we worked on planning, which of course comes before instruction, to make sure that it was tightly aligned with the standards. The instructional staff and leadership teams at these schools worked diligently to follow the plan and stick to the mission, which was to improve student learning and student outcomes. We used several data points to arrive at this, so thank you for bringing back I-ready. The schools use that a lot to make decisions around next steps. So we really focused on problem-solving. Each of these schools had different areas of focus, and that was really based on the data for each of these schools. So using that data, we determined their area of focus. We made a strategic plan to move students and really look at them individually to try to provide every student with what they needed to get to this point. So our intention is to remain on that trajectory, using the new standards, using the new progress monitor, along with the data points that we already have, while we continue to focus on standards-based instruction with the new stand, the new rollout of the standards. It is my hope that we continue to move forward, and hopefully we're back next year with improvements in these areas across the board. Thank you for your support of the department. It is much needed, and I think the schools really appreciated the individual attention and support. So thank you very much to the board, to Superintendent.
Board members, this is my favorite slide in tonight's deck. I think it just is that evidence of when we do focus on something and provide the resources, we get it done. It's exciting. Moving on, this is a recap of our district rankings, and as you're aware, we benchmark ourselves against the other districts divided three different ways, and this is embedded in the board's Strategic Plan System Initiative B for high achievement. And again, working actually in this case right to left, we were again first among all Central Florida districts, second among the 14 largest districts, and that, that 14 largest dividing line is 50,000 students or higher. So that's the kind of cut point for that category. And then overall statewide, among the 67 districts finishing ninth, that's up from 2022. monitor, along with the data points that we already have, while we continue to focus on standards-based instruction with the new stand, the new rollout of the standards. It is my hope that we continue to move forward, and hopefully we're back next year with improvements in these areas across the board. Thank you for your support of the department. It is much needed, and I think the schools really appreciated the individual attention and support. So thank you very much to the board, to Superintendent.
Board members, this is my favorite slide in tonight's deck. I think it just is that evidence of when, when we do focus on something and provide the resources, we get it done. It's exciting. Moving on, this is a recap of our district rankings, and as you're aware, we benchmark ourselves against the other districts divided three different ways, and this is embedded in the board's Strategic Plan System Initiative B for High Achievement. And again, working actually in this case, right to left, we were again first among all Central Florida districts, second among the 14 largest districts, and that, that 14 largest dividing line is 50,000 students or higher. So that's the kind of cut point for that category. And then overall statewide, among the 67 districts finishing ninth, that's up from 12th, the last time that the rankings were, were done this way. And of course, going back to the far right, it's always important to recognize that when you look in that all districts category, we have a variety of districts with various school sizes, free and reduced lunch rates. All of these districts look very different, so it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Nevertheless, we are always interested in what other districts are doing, and certainly is a, is a guide forward for us. So continue to benchmark ourselves that way. This is a different way of looking at the rankings. This is ELA, math and science rankings by grade level, and again, we show the data in all three comparison groups. And as you can see, both in Central Florida and among the 14 largest, we're generally first or second in all of these categories. And again, that same analysis applies in the all 67 districts in terms of the different types of districts that are represented in that group. And I will point out, as I did at the leadership conference last Friday, people who look at this chart for the first time are often drawn to the eighth grade math ranking, which, taken out of context, is clearly our lowest ranking. As Mrs. Thompson already alluded, this ranking is solely the result of the longstanding decision by this district to allow students and families to accelerate in math. And so again, as I told our principals last Friday, that 44th place should be worn as a badge of honor, because it means we're doing the right thing for kids, even if it's not the right thing from a rules-based system. So in terms of taking now all of this data, obviously, our principals tore into this data the same afternoon that it was released, and schedules have been adjusted, and action plans are being developed. And just generally speaking, there are four areas that I think a lot of our school and our district leadership team are really diving into. The first is continuing to look at achievement gaps between subgroups of students. And again, we're, we're required to do that by federal and state law. It's also the right thing to do, and we continue to see pre-pandemic, throughout the pandemic and post-pandemic, that there are achievement gaps between subgroups, and we have to continue to do that work that, that, that this district has been doing for a long time. Secondly, I think we all know that attendance is a priority. We, our data does show that more students missed 10 or more days of school last year, and that's even with pulling out all of the, what we call the Q-codes, the quarantines from last year. Taking all of that out, we still have attendance challenges. So that, that's an area that particularly a lot of our schools are working on in their school improvement plans. Really looking at sub-level analysis, again, that, that refers to the multi-year work that's been going on, trying to move students in the, scoring at High Level 1 and High Level 2 up, and then putting extra supports in place for students scoring at Low Level 3, because we know that statistically, they're more likely to regress to a High 2 the following year. So that, that work really resumes now that we've got a, a clear data metric for 2022. And then finally, you know, I think the key question is where are we at in our, in our pandemic recovery? And again, we, we can put up a lot of data slides that show that we're well on our way. However, you're not comparing the same students from 2019 to 2022. So the data gurus who work for Mrs. Thompson have put some new analysis together that we are diving into and really looking at where students are at three years later. So in 2019, our last pre-pandemic year, our third-grade students, we now have data on them wrapping up sixth grade, and same thing, sixth graders now in ninth grade, or just finished ninth grade. And so how can we use that data to identify groups of students who, who are still struggling with impacts from COVID-19, and then redirect some of those ESER resources to address those issues, so that hopefully when we sit here in front of you a year from now, we can show complete recovery academically from, from what our students and families have dealt with the last two years. Looking forward to next year, we do get a shift in the accountability system. And again, we've, we've previously presented on the state's new progress monitor system that is coming quickly in August. So next year, most students will experience three progress monitor activities, PM 1 in the fall, PM 2 during the winter, and then PM 3 in the traditional April-May testing window, and that, that is now the assessment that counts. Couple of key points, because this is a complete shift in standards, materials, and test blueprints, and really everything else, next year, school grades will be informational or baseline, and that is also because we will not get learning gains calculations because of the, again, the, the resets in place. What that does mean is that our, thinking back to the school grade components, our elementary schools will be graded on student proficiency, percentages of students scoring at Level 3 and above, and then those additional components are likely still in play at middle and high school. The key piece being that next year statewide, school grades will be adjusted so that the same percentage of schools that got As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs this year will see that same percentage statewide next year. So again, next year's accountability system will be a little different, and then things will start to settle again in 23, 24. Nevertheless, you know, we'll certainly work to see what kind of meaningful comparisons that we can get out of the data. We took a great step forward today, Board Members, and again, thank you for your support of the Best Summer Ever Professional Development Conference for Teachers. Today was day one, and we had nearly 2,300 teachers back early, taking advantage of a, of a paid opportunity to really dive into new standards and new materials. And we're, we were happy to welcome all of those teachers today, appreciate their willingness to be here, and Board Members, thank you for investing in them.
Any questions or comments?
First of all, thank you very much. I appreciate all the information. Dr. Cummings, a special thank you to you for working with the schools and doing what you do best. You're awesome at what you do, and I really appreciate it. With the Go Math series finally going, yippee, I'm super happy. We will see a decline in our grades with math. It's come, usually common with, you know, a new series. What are we doing to help with the change from textbook when we receive the new textbooks that we adopted? What kind of, you know, information or things can we do to help our families and students, as well as teachers?
That, that's a great question, and again, the, the importance of the Best Summer Ever Conference is that opportunity for teachers to dive into those materials as quickly as possible, so that they can get comfortable. I think the Department of Teaching and Learning has put together a very comprehensive approach that focuses on ease of use of the framework and the pacing guides that have been designed. A lot of thought went into those, and specifically aligning even the colors of tabs of things back to how they're set up in the textbooks that were adopted. So a, a lot of work has happened there. I think that the faster we can get our, our teaching core up to speed on the new materials, the easier that transition will be on everyone. And certainly, we're, we're continuing to discuss ways to connect with families, particularly on the mathematical thinking and reasoning standards. That, that is the key to the, the entire best system, K through 12, is, is driving home those standards that, that apply universally, whether you have a five-year-old or an 18-year-old, that, that, that there are key practices that make students successful in mathematics. So we'll be looking for opportunities to engage families in, in dialogue about what that looks like.
Thank you all so much.
I, I just had one quick comment. Will we be adding VPK scoring into this, since we'll be testing our VPK kids on a computer?
Yeah, we anticipate that that will take place. VPK and K2 was added to the FAST system of progress monitoring. So the assessment system will be introduced in the 22-23 school year. So we anticipate that adjustments to the accountability system will then be forthcoming. That may include the addition of K2, VPK, and in some respects, we're not sure how that will work, but we anticipate those changes coming as we come into the 23-24 school year.
To piggyback onto that, my concern with this, and it seems like Groundhog Day for us all over again when FSA came around and this, standards. I'm really concerned about our young kiddos and their ability to use technology, and therefore, I don't know what we're really measuring, if we're measuring the kid's ability to use technology or to really answer the questions correctly. Are we, as a school district, from an educational standpoint, putting in any stopgaps, trainings, or other type of inquiries, so we can really find out what the kiddos know?
Paper, pencil?
Well, I'd like to speak to, you know, for VPK kids and our younger kids, because we do use iReady, the kids are really accustomed to listening, with, because for VPK specifically, for PMs, it really is listening and then being able to use the mouse or the touchpad. So during the course of the year, they have an opportunity to do that, to practice that skill, both with the teacher and independently. So we have found, just through using those resources, that students do quite well with those. And we also, I think, in kindergarten, at least the elementary level, because they use iReady daily and they take the diagnostic, it really aligns very nicely with the online portion. As far as keyboarding, that will be something we'll have to address differently for the writing portion of the test, but for the other items, I think that what we do daily, how we, the way that we integrate technology supports students being successful with responding.
I just still want to support what we know is developmentally sound for kids that age. They need to learn those fine motor skills. They need to have time doing those kind of tasks. And I know we haven't lengthened our school day or our school year, and we just keep piling on more things that we have to do, but I, I have faith in you all that we'll figure it out.
Dr. Cummings mentioned writing, just as a reminder, that writing will be part of the FAST assessments. However, for the 22-23 school year, writing will be field-tested only. The, the department at plans to tap 80% of the schools in the state, and we can opt in and we can opt out. They'll tell us who's going to participate. So they will be doing a field test for writing, and there will be grades 4 through 10, and the writing will be computer-based 4 through 10. Then writing will join the FAST progress monitoring assessment plan in the spring of '23, and that'll probably be an April, I'm sorry, the spring of '24, be an April assessment of, of the writing.
Thank you.
So with writing going into, onto the computer-based, are keyboarding skills coming back in place?
As Dr. Cummings alluded to, that'll be something that we'll be kind of focusing on and looking at. Our students participate in the Write Score Progress Monitoring for Writing now. Some of them are participating in that as a computer-based assignment. Specifically, our students in grades 4 and 5 will need that level of support in grade 6, as those, as those writing assessments will move from paper, pencil, to computer for those groups of students.
I just, I'm still a paper, pencil person, or hands-on. The computer thing is out, out of control, but thank you.
Any other questions?
And I know we're usually stronger when we have great community support, and maybe this is one of the topics or one of the work sessions we can do in our parent training, or, you know, suggest the keyboarding earlier rather than later. I, I just think as much support that we can give to our students, it can't just be our classroom teachers, I think. If we could do even anything online that parents can access any time of the day or night, that would be, I think, a great benefit for our families.
Do we have a keyboarding class in Clever? I thought that, like, we used to, not one that's widely accessible, not just restricted to a certain class. I thought we had one. Did that go away?
We've had keyboarding classes, I think, available to students across a wide variety of grade levels. That's probably not something that we've looked at, at recently, so that's something that we can certainly take a look at and, and see what can be available to students and families.
All right. Thank you very much. Well done.
Okay, Board Member Items for Discussion. Member Kraus?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Member Almond? Member Calderon?
No, ma'am.
Member Sanchez?
No, ma'am.
And I have none as well, so we'll move on into the public comments section. Member Sanchez, if you'll read the statement.
Policy 0169.1, Public Participation at Board Meetings. The purpose of public participation segment of the board meeting is to allow the public to address matters with the board's jurisdiction and not for resolving individual grievances or disputes. Public comments related to the educa, to education, the board agenda, and the district are welcome and encouraged. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comment segment of the meeting may not be used as an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, including presentation of political and/or campaign issues, announcing candidacy, or campaigning, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or to the public. Nor is it a forum to address matters involving disciplinary actions of any kind, pending claims, complaints, litigation against the district or district personnel. Also, public comment is not a forum to engage in personal attacks against the school system, employees, or board members. Statements made by a member of the public shall be limited to three-minute duration. One designated group representative speaking on proposition before the board will have a maximum of six minutes. No speaker may yield his or her time to any other person. Substitutions of speakers will not be allowed, except in exceptional circumstances as determined by the presiding officer. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience or other speakers. This policy does not prohibit the board from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in a public meeting, in a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sanchez. As Member Sanchez has provided a clear statement of the requirement for civility and decorum during school board meetings pursuant to Board Policy 169.1, I would like to reiterate that the public comment section of this meeting is not a forum to engage in personal attacks, heckling, abusing comments, or verbal outbursts in disruption of conduct, of conducting an orderly meeting. Remarks must relate to the business of the district. Should a speaker persist in conduct in violation of board policy, the microphone will be turned off, and the speaker will be instructed to step away from the podium. Everyone in this assembly is warned that failure to conduct oneself as stated may be removed. We have a group of speakers here that are, have requested addressing something that I want to just make sure that our attorney, Ms. Cole Palmer, provides a statement, just reitification on, on how we can respond. So Ms. Cole Palmer, if you would just read a statement, please.
Of course, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Of course, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, as you're aware, we are currently negotiating this year's contracts with the respective bargaining units. Therefore, you are unable to respond to an, any individual emails, letters, phone calls, or comments that may arise during board meetings as it relates to any ongoing collective bargaining items or issues. To do so would be deemed, or could be deemed, a violation of collective bargaining process by the Public Employees Relation Commission and result in an unfair labor practice charge. So I admonish the board once again that you are not able to respond to these comments, even if you're sitting and listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will start with Allison Holmes, followed by Barbara Beasley, and then James Evans.
Allison Holmes, Longwood. There's a movie called The Terminator. It's about a cyborg that has no compassion, no sympathy, nothing. As I sit through our meetings that have been hijacked by homeschooling parents and religious fanatics, I keep thinking about a quote from that movie. "The Terminator can't be reasoned with. It doesn't feel pity or remorse, and it absolutely will not stop ever until you are dead." And that's the primitive mentality we're dealing with here. These people stride up to the podium armed only with misplaced confidence. These people stride up to the podium armed only with misplaced confidence, ready to challenge the experts with fear and ignorance. They claim they want to partner with the school board, yet they keep regurgitating false accusations like teachers in SCPS are brainwashing students with woke-ism, or they're indoctrinating kids with transgenderism. And this is the same group who posts pictures of any teacher who supports LGBTQ students on social media and calls them groomers. Many real SCPS parents, including me, moved to Seminole County for the A-rated schools. SCPS has an A-rating because of our teachers, our SLPs, and all the district staff, not despite them. SCPS doesn't need to be supervised by Moms for Liberty. How long do you think our A-rating?
If you would please keep your comments relevant to the school board and not tack public, public.
How long do you think our A-rating will last in Seminole County if they're involved in the curriculum? We'll lose that A-rating faster than they disappeared from the last meeting. We need well-rounded, informed students, not these one-dimensional Amish-like students they want. Enlightened people understand, reading a book about Joe Biden doesn't mean your child will become president. And conversely, reading a book about Donald Trump doesn't mean your kid will try and overthrow the government. Acknowledging that some kids have two dads isn't grooming students. And respecting pronouns isn't indoctrinating them with transgenderism. At the convention for the people I don't, I not shouldn't mention then, last week, they gave kids buttons that said, "No matter what my teacher says, I will always love America." This simply isn't a group our school district can work with. These aren't reasonable people, like The Terminator. They can't be reasoned with. They don't feel pity or remorse, and they absolutely will not stop ever until our A-rating is dead. Wake up, Seminole County. The group that has no name has candidates running in every school district for school board next month. SOS, save our schools and vote.
Barbara Beasley. Water please.
Good evening, Board, Ms. Beeman, and fellow Seminole County families. I'm here this evening because after several months of online viewing, I found that it can't be silent any longer. I'm a special needs advocate and parent who removed my youngest from SCPS after her needs were repeatedly not served. Hindsight is always twenty-twenty, and I also regret that I never removed or knew how to fight harder for my three E student who graduated in twenty-twenty. I'm here tonight to remind everyone present that a school board meeting is a business meeting. It is a time for the board and superintendent to come before teachers and families to discuss past, present, and future plans. It is a time for families, teachers, and staff to have their voices heard publicly. But it is a meeting. It's not a shout fest to see whose agenda item is the most important. As an advocate, I'd like to remind everyone that our kids are watching us and absorbing what we say and do. Their behavior is a direct reflection of ours. When we scream out insults and behave in ways that force us to be removed from a public meeting, we are not delivering our best adult version. The irony is that if you're watching at home, everyone here wants the exact same thing. We want our kids to learn. We want them safe. We want them to feel valued for who they are and not some title or apportionment of their person. What we fail to acknowledge is that forcing them to study at levels above their brains' development to be college and career-ready is wrong. To tell them to sit down, sit still, be quiet, don't touch, is in direct opposition to their healthy development. When we further that by telling them how to feel, what to say, how to react, and who to sit with in the cafeteria, we violate their rights as humans to have their own feelings and opinions. When we bully them by doing this to them and then tell them not to bully others, we are the ones that are wrong. We are the ones who need to change. If you tell Susie to be nice to Johnny and sit with him in the cafeteria, denying her the right to sit with someone she chooses, and then act surprised when the whole class turns on Johnny, we are wrong. If the only books they read and the only stories they are told are dystopian, dark, and never have a happy ending, we are teaching them that their lives are doomed to be dark. Their brains just aren't developed enough to see the nuances that maturity and wisdom of adulthood bring. Lastly, one of the most important lessons we learn in advocacy school is not to bubble wrap our children. Quit making safe spaces. Our kids will have very tough, even brutal times in their lives, and scary times. Helping them to avoid dealing them, with them is not helping them. If they want to pet fish, let them have it. It will teach them about death in small doses so that the first loss they face isn't you. It isn't the school's role to do a lot of the things that people are insisting that they do. Rather, it is their role to teach our children to be compassionate and to help them do hard things.
James Evans, water please.
Good evening, uh, Chairperson and ladies of the board. I'm here today to discuss, and I thought it'd be completely, uh, very appropriate considering that the school board is currently discussing teachers. I'd like to remind everyone three hun- of three hundred and four dollars. Three hundred and four dollars is what we gave our highly effective teachers from last year. There were a lot of things that went into that number, I'm sure, a lot of things that people may didn't, maybe didn't see in the public. But I think we can all agree that the ninth-rated district in the state deserves more than that for highly effective teachers. The other reason I bring up that three hundred and four dollars is, is as I combed through the previous year's CBA, it became readily apparent that we were hiding the number. It's not in the actual contract itself, but rather in the appendix. I, I looked around some other counties locally here, only to see that they put in the language of the contract how much these educators were worth, how much their value as effective and highly effective ratings meant directly in the body of the contract. And to give you an idea, Orange County just came up with their number, and it's over twenty-four hundred dollars for a highly effective teacher. It's eighteen hundred dollars for an effective teacher. A very vast difference separates Orange County and Seminole County's agreements for how effect, how much we pay our effective teachers. And, and yet, we're trying to fill the gaps in our community right now for teacher shortages. And yet, as one of the best-ranking school systems in the state, we're not paying those same educators a commensurate amount. The other thing that I would like to bring to your attention is, Orange County is, uh, three times the size of our student body. They're right around two-hundred-and-seven thousand. They're kind of projecting in that number again this year. Yet their budget is four times as large. Their approved budget was four billion. Now, I don't know where the difference of a billion dollars ended up in, in terms of, uh, are the per pupil spending in Seminole versus Orange. But I think it might be an interesting piece for our, our staff to look at and to see if we can find, maybe they're getting grants, or is it Title I spending? Is it, you know, I, I would imagine we have a lot of things that we're eligible for that I don't, again, I don't know if we're applying for these types of items. But it just seems very odd that Orange County is getting that much more per pupil in, in funding. And perhaps that's why they're able to afford these larger bonuses for their, uh, high-performing teachers. So again, I'll leave on that. Um, just thought it was a, a rather interesting point of fact, as, as you all discussed with the CBA. But I think at the end of the day, we owe it to our educators in Seminole County to tell them how much they're worth in the actual contract. Thank you.
Nina Sandberg, water please. Water. We'll have Nina Sandberg, followed by Julia Squateri, followed by Jasmine Cowor.
I'm Nina Sandberg, and I'm the adult in the room. For months, the board has been allowing select Democrats to break the public comment rules however they want during public meetings. Everyone else is required to follow the public comment rules, except for these select Democrat activists who use the meetings to tell slander, defamation, and lies about board members, parents, and parents groups. The school board lawyers never tell these rude activists to shut up, and they never turn their microphones off either. Yet my own microphone was turned off, and I was rudely interrupted when I asked for more Black History instruction to back up Mr. Bentley some months ago. These select Democrats are permitted to spew insult after insult and lie after lie about people who they don't even know, month after month. The board has been afraid to confront this political group, but I am not afraid. This is not appropriate behavior at school board meetings, and it needs to stop. The cold, hard truth is that there are no racist, white supremacists, Uncle Toms, Proud Boys, QAnon members, Moms for Bigotry, et cetera, on the school board, in the audience, in the parents groups, among the school board candidates, or in the parking lot. There are just fellow Americans who occasionally disagree with you about the education of their children. These particular Democrats need to grow up and behave. They should not be insulting everyone who is not in their political group at a school board meeting. They have now insulted Jews, Christians, Hispanics, Blacks, parents of special needs children, special needs adults, et cetera. They are insulting people who they have never met and who they have never had a cup of coffee with in order to affect the school board elections in violation of the public comment rules. SCPS is supposed to be completely and totally politically neutral at all times because it is a public school system that has to service everyone from all political parties, all religions, all cultures, all ethnicities, all races, et cetera. These people have been having a temper tantrum because they want to force their own politics on everyone else inside of a public school system. This is not appropriate, and this also needs to stop. As a Jewish parent with a special needs child, I am tired of being insulted by people who I don't even know, month after month. It is enough already.
Water. Julia Squateri.
Hello, my name is Julia Squateri, and I am a twenty-twenty-two graduate of Hagerty High School. I'm here today concerning policy item F, the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three Student Conduct and Discipline Guide, which includes a revised draft of the dress code policy. For the last two years of my time at Hagerty High School, I led a group of dedicated and passionate peers to advocate for dress code reform. And I am grateful that the dress code policy on which you all will vote today has been crafted through lengthy discussions with staff and students. I remember a conversation just a few months ago in which a peer of mine remarked that it must be disappointing to graduate the year before I could see the advocacy work of my peers and I come to fruition. But voting on a reformed dress code policy today is about more than just what length of shorts students can wear or whether they can show their shoulders. It is about supporting student advocacy and, most of all, the right to educational equity. Dress code policies aren't trivial matters that just impact a student during their K through twelve education. They are policies that, when enforced in discriminatory ways, can normalize gender discrimination in ways that stick with students long after they graduate. And so today, as I urge this school board to vote in support of adopting the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three Student Conduct and Discipline Guide, I do so in the hope that no more students will be plagued by memories of being sexualized by school staff, slut-shamed, or humiliated because of a policy that does not support equity. It is my hope that the next dress code for this school district will better serve students instead of teaching them that their bodies are more important than their education. Students deserve no less than to be treated with dignity and respect, no matter what they are wearing. Our Seminole County community must take a stand against gender discrimination. And voting for reform of the dress code is integral to that vision. To vote in favor of agenda item F today is to vote in favor of educational equity. No more students should be told that their shoulders are distracting their male peers. No more students should be looked up and down and told that their bodies are too sexual. No more students should be pulled out of class and degraded. But most of all, no more students should be the recipient of treatment that normalizes gender discrimination and the subjugation of feminine individuals. Thank you for your time.
Water please. Water. Jasmine Cowor, followed by Eric Monte, followed by Autumn Garrick.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Carr, and I graduated from Hagerty High School this past May. Today, the school board before me will vote on agenda item F, the adopt, in the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three Student Code of Conduct. This document includes a reformed version of the SCPS's dress code. This dress code does not contain provisions that would explicitly target feminine students, such as the bans of cleavage or various forms of tank tops. For that, we are grateful. I graduated from Hagerty High School in May of this year. And yet, I stand here to continue to advocate for the rights of students who have yet to graduate. I myself have been dress-coded during my time in Seminole County public schools, and it's a memory I won't forget. Narded Hannah, a student who was dress-coded in third grade for exposed shoulders at Bentley Elementary School. Narded Charlotte, a student who was dress-coded and objectified by her male dean for exposed cleavage at the age of just eleven at Rock Lake Middle School. Narded Sarah, a student who cried for hours in the bathroom after being dress-coded at Lawton Child's Middle School. Narded Laura, whose bra straps made her a target throughout middle and high school. None of us forgot what it felt like to have someone tell us that our bodies are considered too sexual or inappropriate in places that are supposed to protect and teach us. The new dress code included in the proposed twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three Student Conduct, Code of Conduct, may be the first step of ensuring that no more students are trailed for years with their dress code stories. It is a product of student advocacy, and we might think, we might thank this district for listening to the stories of our students. Educational equal, equi- equity, equity is too important to let our schools place outdated sexist norms above the rights and education of our students. So while we're here to advocate for the approval of the new dress code for Seminole County public schools, we are also here to speak on the importance of equitable enforcement. Hannah, Charlotte, Sarah, Laura, me. None of us should have ever been told that our bodies distracted our male peers or were too sexual. None of us should have ever had to miss class time because of a dress code. Let's ensure that the next dress code for SCPS students will never be a tool of discrimination in our schools by voting to support the dress code included in agenda item F today. The right to gender equity must be respected in our schools, or else more students will have painful memories of being dress-coded. Thank you for your time.
Water please. Eric Monte.
Good evening, Chairman Pennock, Superintendent Beeman, and the rest of the board. My name is Eric Monte. I'm a parent of two SCPS students. My son Fred is about to begin fourth grade at Rainbow Elementary. My daughter Ally, who you all heard speak at the May thirty-first school board meeting, who is attending seventh grade in the Entrales Middle. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Calderon and Ms. Almond for their twelve years of service to SCPS and Seminole County, and wish you much success in your next endeavors. We all agree that we want all of our students to learn in a safe environment, free from disruptions ranging from general nuisance and garden variety misbehavior to more severe incidents of violence, including fighting and even the use of firearms. When my daughter spoke on May thirty-first about her experiences at ITMS, her dominant topic was firearms in the wake of the tragic Uvalde massacre. However, my daughter spoke of the more common menace that unlike firearms is a daily occurrence at ITMS and I suspect throughout the district. General discipline of garden variety disruptions, insolent, and casual violence. My daughter spoke eloquently of her experiences as a smaller student and general lack of supervision and consequences of disturbances acknowledging that staff and teachers are trying their best with the tools they are given. I'm here to drive that message home. Students can't feel safe, they can't learn effectively, if they feel like students who run wild have no fear of punishment and consequences. Sadly, we see this in many cities across the country after the twenty-twenty mostly peaceful protests that police have been marginalized, DAs and prosecutors showing little desire to punish violent lawbreakers, and some handcuffed by the laws barring cash bail and encouraging immediate release. immediate release. Several years into this latest social experiment, we see police morale lowest in decades, police retirements up, and recruitment low as property and violent, and violent crime rates shoot up. It seems to be some buyer's remorse of embracing these soft-term crime and newering of police departments bubbling in the electorate we shall see this fall. How does this relate to SCPS? It seems that many similar attitudes are permeating the discipline philosophy at SCPS. There are even some leaders that have openly stated they are against suspension and expulsion for any reason. Students need and crave structure. We can create a great structure with reasonable flexibility that would be strong like a suspension bridge. Earthquake-proof buildings absorb stress and a proper discipline structure can be strong and flexible for the needs of our diverse community. As stated, at least two of the school members will be placed next year, but I implore you not to be lame ducks and start the reevaluation process of our school discipline policies to be more uniform, transparent, with some teeth so that students know that troublemakers will be dealt with swiftly and appropriately. Teachers need a support as well because an unruly classroom, which you cannot teach effectively, is the definition of a hostile work environment. I am sure every student, parent, employee of SCPS wants troubled students to get the help and support they need, but the board needs to set the tone that the unruliness in hallways, classrooms, cafeteria, locker rooms, and bathrooms will no longer be acceptable beha- deemed acceptable behavior and to foster culture of mutual respect not only for themselves but each other. Thank you.
Autumn Garrick, followed by Jennifer Richard, followed by Elsie Greciano.
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, and Superintendent Beeman. My name is Autumn Garrick and I have served our schools as a volunteer and professionally for over 20 years. Like most of the people in this room, my family and I moved to Seminole County Public Schools for the schools. SCPS is and has been for decades our key economic driver and the largest employer in our region. My own children surpass their academic goals thanks to the strong foundation built right here in Seminole County. I'm speaking tonight to say thank you. Thank you for promoting rigorous coursework to prepare our students to be internationally competitive. Thank you for providing extra support for those students who need it. Thank you for providing opportunities to our artists and to our athletes. Thank you for building strong relationships with our community and business partners because we all know that strong schools equals strong communities. Thank you for partnering with our Sheriff's Department for keeping our children safe. Thank you for developing and growing our e-pathways vocational tract. But most of all, thank you for your leadership and tenacity. A special thank you to Karen Allman and Tina Calderon for leading us so well for 12 years. I had the good fortune to be a guest at the leadership conference this past week. And with just two weeks left until school starts, I want to publicly say that I appreciate what you have accomplished, but I appreciate more what you are looking to accomplish from looking out for our students who aren't always seen, for investing extra people power to help students who are not performing at grade level. Thank you. Thank you for listening and learning from the community. I look forward to our best new year.
Jennifer Richard. Order please.
Good evening Board Members, Superintendent Beeman. My name is Jennifer Richard and I have been a speech-language pathologist in Seminole County Public Schools for almost 20 years. SLPs represent 39% of ESC students in SCPS. Currently and for preceding years, we have received a stipend that is $10,000 less than our occupational therapist colleagues who serve less than 5% of the ESC population. This is a bloat of morale and is quickly becoming a detriment to the quality of speech-language services in SCPS. Being able to retain seasoned SLPs in our county is now a critical issue. Masters-level SLPs require multiple years of schooling across disciplines as well as countless certification and passing board qualifications. We have much or as more training as our OT counterparts, however, our stipends are significantly less. Now, during this bargaining process, our cohort is asking why. It is worth mentioning that a student cannot receive OT or PT services without a primary exceptionality, which often rests on being identified with a communication disorder. Thus, many times, SLPs are the gatekeepers for students to receive services that cannot stand alone. SLPs generate large amounts of state funds through Medicaid and ESC matrices. In speech-only evaluations, we act as our own staffing resource specialists, generating and explaining to parents all evaluations and legal paperwork necessary to determine eligibility in the state of Florida. During quarantine, SLPs were one of the only groups in the district mandated to continue daily therapy without any platform training or telehealth guidance. We rose to the occasion as we do in many other cases. We talked many parents through the process and helped acclimate our students with disabilities through this unprecedented time. We not only support our students but also parents who are learning and adapting to their child's disability. We offer hope and guidance to help parents address their number-one concern on an individual education plan or ESC parent survey, which is almost always communication. I have personally worked with a few members on this dais to evaluate your own children or advocate for SCPS during litigation. When called to student study team meetings and to due-process hearings, masters SLPs are data-driven and prepared to confidently share our findings with parents and advocates. This kind of meticulous data and planning take years of practice and experience to address these situations, which bachelor's-level SLPs have simply not yet acquired. Bachelor SLPs cannot evaluate students, submit Medicaid, or supervise interns. Based on the most current information, 20% of SCPS SLP positions are underqualified. Several are vacant. In closing, SCPS will continue to lose master-level SLPs if we are not recognized with the same monetary supplementation as our colleagues. We are courted daily by recruiters and private practices via text, email, and phone calls. We stay because we love our students and families. Soon, however, not even our pensions and benefits will be worth what can be made in any other private setting in which all therapy disciplines are paid equally based upon training and education. Thank you for hearing us.
Order please. Order.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a child who had special needs and I came to support teachers and therapists that work in our public school system. My child had severe developmental delays and we had to use speech therapy to ensure she was able to communicate, to read, to understand tests, to understand directions, to establish relationships and social lives, and to understand safety issues. And the list goes and on and on. We found many benefits through these therapies and without these therapies, my child wouldn't succeed as she did. Thank you very much.
Order. Arkeisha Gibson, followed by Maria Grec- Greciano, followed by Kathy Signer. Arkeisha.
Hello. I would like to say thank you to the board as well as my fellow educators and students that are here today for allowing me to speak. Currently, I am a speech-language pathologist at Bear Lake Elementary. I've been in this district going on 22 years come December 16th actually, or 18th. Here's additional information to share with the community on how speech and language impacts. My student has greatly impacted by speech and language pathologists. I have encountered the endless benefits and lifetime connections with the involvement of having this added support and essential intervention in my student's life. My student has been receiving speech services all his educational career. It wasn't until he started attending Bear Lake where the standards for these services were unmatched. He was met with a smiling face and a warm personality who was sensitive to his needs and my needs as a parent. She understood his need to help him to be successful. It wasn't just a weekly intervention, it was essential to his development not only as a student but his character. The experience with an SOP has made me have hope as a parent that the skills that my student has acquired will be lifelong. Since his involvement with an SOP, his language has increased with more than average age-appropriate vocabulary. He has a sense of confidence that is not only noticeable by his teacher but also his peers, which has made school a more pleasurable experience. Lastly, my student has added an individual to his village that loves, supports, and encourages me as a parent. It is my position that whatever measures needed to retain these dynamic individuals we call SOPs is a crisis and should be at the forefront of any agenda. I would like to now take the opportunity to invite to the podium a former Seminole County Public School student. She is the evidence of early intervention and an impact an SOP has on the commun- on communication at large within the community. She speaks beautifully, but looking at her, you would never know that she started in Seminole County Public School non-verbal. I also want to let you know, get this, she graduated as salutatorian. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Maria Greciano.
Sorry, um, thank you, Ms. Gibson, for introducing me. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on such an important matter and I hope you can gain some insight on how speech therapy has affected my life for the better. When my mother was pregnant with me, the doctors told her that I would become a burden, a child fated to never speak, to never read, and to never write. Before I even had a chance to be born yet, everyone decided that my future for me had no hope. My mother refused to accept what they said and had faith that God would be good to her and help heal her child. When I was born, I looked like any other kid, but my brain was not the same. I had a severe learning delay and had only begun baby talking when I was already three years old. I, my poor mother, worked day and night, 24/7, to help me and teach me how to communicate and to focus on others. I couldn't even make simple eye contact and didn't understand basic commands. My mother began to look for speech therapists to help me and there were some that were assigned by the school and that's where we went, Ms. Cynthia and later Ms. Gibson. These two beautiful and incredible women, I believe, were sent from God to finally give me the help and attention that I needed. They worked and worked with me for years to help me overcome my disabilities. When teachers were saying that I should move to a special needs school as I would never make it in a normal school, Ms. Cynthia and Mrs. Gibson never gave up on me and continued to work with me and teach me the skills that I needed to succeed in life. Even though it was a hard and grueling process with many long nights filled with frustration and tears, I finally started to talk properly by the age of eight. Soon after, I was finally finished with therapy and was able to communicate effortlessly and effectively. Even though my social skills were still very much behind, I excelled in reading and writing, two of the things that doctors and teachers said I would never be able to do. I was ahead of my class in elementary and was able to read college-level books by sixth grade. Thanks to the therapy Ms. Cynthia and Mrs. Gibson gave to me, I was finally able to make friends and speak up for myself as I was also a victim of intense bullying. Now, years later, at the age of 20, I have a very bright future ahead of me. I graduated salutatorian from high school and I made quite a bit of friends over the years, too. I graduate from Seminole State College of Florida this fall and have earned nothing but As and a high GPA throughout my past two years there. I plan on going to law school after earning my bachelor's in political science. I have hope in myself that I can go farther than I ever thought possible. All of this wouldn't have been possible without the genuine love and support my two therapists gave me. If it wasn't for them, I would not be here right now. Teachers like them work hard at their jobs and put in twice the effort and patience than other normal teachers do. They invest in the lives of their kids and make sure they're thriving in their environment and know that they're cared for. If anyone deserves more support and acknowledgement, it's them. I will forever be grateful to people like them for never giving up on people like me and I hope that they can continue with your help to impact more young lives in need of help in situations similar to mine and receive the recognition and help that they do truly deserve. Thank you.
Kathy Signer, followed by Erin Mason, followed by Lena Boccio.
Hi, my name is Kathy Signer and I have been a speech-language pathologist for 33 years, with 29 of those years dedicated to Seminole County Public Schools. It has been an honor and a privilege to work for this district and to serve our students in Seminole County. Throughout my career, I have seen many of my SLP coworkers leaving SCPS for other opportunities: hospitals, rehabs, private practice, as well as other districts to make a higher, more competitive salary. In fact, many SLPs in our county are switching to Osceola County for the 2223 school year. The Osceola School Board just recently approved a new pay scale for SLPs to align with occupational and physical therapists. Our district will continue to lose seasonal and masters-level SLPs if we are not recognized with equitable wages. I ask you to please consider our proposal and pay SLPs what we deserve. Thank you.
Order.
I also have a letter that I'd like to read from a parent whose child receives speech therapy from one of our amazing SLPs in our district. It's pretty hard to quantify the deep impact that this SOP has had on our lives, but I will try. Our son started speech therapy last year after noticing some delays in his speech and development. Before starting speech therapy, it was hard for him to communicate and as a result, he would get frustrated over the smallest detail. He would throw some pretty awful tantrums and daily life was very stressful. From day one, our son developed a very special relationship with this amazing SOP. He felt safe and in a nurturing environment to grow. He's happier, connecting new concepts every day, and most importantly, doesn't even realize he's getting the extra help he needs because he loves going to therapy so much. It used to be that every little thing would set him off, but now that he's able to communicate his needs better, we've noticed a dramatic increase in his tantrums, sorry, decrease in his tantrums. This therapist has been a godsend to our family and we can't thank her enough for the way she's brought our son out of his shell. She's patient, loving, and knowledgeable beyond measure in adolescent development. We are so thankful for the impact she's had on our lives. Thank you so much for your time.
Order.
Hi, my name is Erin Mason and I'm an SLP for SCPS. My plan was to get up here and talk to you about the day in the life of an elementary school SLP, but I can't because every single day is different. I know that every week I will provide therapy to the 80-plus students on my caseload. Each student will receive between 15 and 120 minutes of services per week. I'll teach some of them to produce their sounds correctly so they can be understood by their peers and family, so they can increase their reading and so that Alexa can understand what they're asking, which is important when a wheelchair-bound teenager wants to hear her favorite song. I'll work with the student who's frustrated by the fact that they stutter and will no longer answer out loud in class due to embarrassment. I'll work with others to increase vocabulary, sentence structure, word structure, social communication skills to help them in the classroom and with their peers. I know every day I'll be the biggest advocate for all 80 of my students. I will test and diagnose because as a healthcare professional, that's what I do. Each test takes anywhere from an hour to two or more. I'll write lengthy reports and explain those disorders and delays. I'll write IEPs to meet the individual needs of my individual students. I'll meet with parents and other members of the team to review the findings and explain what they mean, to help them develop the best way to help these students be successful in the classroom and ultimately become a successful communicator. After the testing and meetings, I'll gladly figure out how to add this student to an already full schedule and I'll be ready to provide them with the therapy they need. I'll have annual reviews for every student, often more than once a ye- once a year. I'll support the families by providing resources and suggestions for their students and a listening ear when they're frustrated and want to help but aren't sure how. I'll stop on my way to lunch because I hear a kindergarten student screaming in the classroom. I'll take him for a walk to get the sensory input he needs to communicate more effectively about why he's upset. After I drop him off, I'll stop to talk to a first-grade teacher about a student that she's concerned about. She has a free minute in planning, so we'll go back to her room, review the data, and give her some suggestions. I'll just have lunch later. In addition to therapy and testing new students, I'll reevaluate to determine progress, I'll take data, set up interventions, meet with teachers to discuss concerns, observe students, collaborate with teachers, participate in school duty assignments and school-wide initiatives. I'll bill Medicaid and I'll plan. I'll research the different diagnoses that my students come in with so that I can help the team to better serve them. I do it because I love it. It's what I was made to do. I'm a fantastic SLP and I know that because I see the proof. I see it when a pre-K student can verbally request a snack for the first time rather than pointing, when a student who is non-verbal can tell his mom that he loves her for the first time at seven years old. I see it in the data and the report card grades of my students. I see it when a first-grader tells me that she's excited because her parents can understand what she's trying to tell them. I see it when a first-grader tells me that she's excited because her parents can understand what she's trying to tell them. SCPS is one of the best counties in Florida. That's why my students go here. In order to be the best, you have to have the best. These SOPs are the best. We're not asking for more. We're asking to be compensated fairly. We're asking to be paid like the other healthcare professionals in our county. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lena Basio, and I am a full-time SOP at Lake Mary Elementary. I also do private speech and language therapy after school, eight to ten hours per week during the school year, and I take on more hours over the summer because I can't afford to live on my school salary alone. A lot of people ask me why I don't just do private therapy full-time and quit the schools, since I can make more money there. My answer to that is because there are parents who can't afford private therapy, whose insurance doesn't cover therapy. Some parents can't get their child to therapy after school due to their work schedules, lack of transportation, or even not knowing how to access outside services. Sometimes schools are their only option for their children to get the speech-language services that they need. Sometimes parents aren't even aware something is wrong until they get that call from the SOP in the schools. SOPs are important to the schools, and we have already lost many amazing SOPs to other settings, such as private practices, hospitals, and even other counties in Florida due to the low pay in Seminole County. With the ever-rising rent, house prices, gas prices, food prices, just the overall inflation, more of us will be forced to leave Seminole County to find better-paying jobs because we just can't afford to work here anymore. We are overworked, undervalued, and underpaid, but we do it all for the kids who need us. We are highly skilled, highly qualified, and we deserve that our paychecks reflect that. Thank you.
Megan Renninger, followed by Elvin Tellez, followed by Lisa Lebusfeld. I apologize if I've said your names wrong.
Good evening. My name is Megan Ridinger. I'm a proud Seminole County product of Seminole County, also a parent, and I've been a speech-language pathologist in Seminole County for the last eighteen years. And I have some, a letter I'd like to share from also another proud Seminole County family with their experience with SOPs. Our daughter had the benefit of working with a Seminole County SOP on her speech and language deficiencies. Prior to her engagement with the SOP, she experienced learning challenges in the classroom and received disparaging comments from other students for being different. The SOP was patient, understanding, and has in-depth knowledge of the steps required to coach our daughter. I personally believe that young children struggle with confidence now more than ever, and this SOP helped her feel comfortable speaking up in any situation without fear of negative repercussions. We're grateful for the support that we have received and recognize that there are other students in situations similar to our daughter that may not have access to the same benefits. We support any expansion of or investment in the SOP program that is necessary to support the student population that truly requires this attention. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here on behalf of, a little choked up, because I'm hearing what you guys do for us, what it means to see my son talk, and be able not to get frustrated means a lot. Ms. Ayman knew my son when he was three, and the promise that he had, he was a preemie. He was eleven weeks early. So he was in the system to get help, which I was very thankful. Being that we're living in Seminole County, I am a graduate of Lake Mary High School, nineteen ninety-three. That's one of the reasons why I stayed, because of the teachers in Seminole County. But how do we put the value on what they're worth? By looking at a child, and the smile, and the confidence they have now able to speak clearly, how you put value on that? My son receives both physical and speech therapy. To say that one therapist gives one thing, and another gives another, where's that balance? I hear the word "fair." Does anybody truly tell me the definition of "fair"? When you take into consideration emotions of the parents that come and ask for questions that don't have access because of whatever their standards when it comes to money? They give and give. Isn't it time for us to give back? To say, "Thank you for giving my son the confidence to speak, to be able to not get frustrated because we have to sit there and ask, 'Hey, can you repeat that real quick?'" So everything out of here, it's just a fair advantage. So let's learn to use that word, "fair." Maybe we should put at the even field, and so we don't keep on losing those people that are the best. Ain't we, Seminole County, one of the best? Isn't that what the numbers have been saying? And should we continue to have the best? And how do we do that? To make sure that we have the feels same. And I thank you.
After Lisa, we'll have Laura Smith, Sasha Ruiz, and Aiman Dowdally.
Hello, my name is Lisa Lebusfeld. I've been a speech-language pathologist for twenty-seven years, starting my twenty-eighth year, and I've been in Seminole County for eight years now. Um, I do have a letter to read, but before that, I just wanted to share that if it weren't for the speech-language pathologist in Seminole County, my son wouldn't have graduated this past May. He's only received language therapy because that's all he's qualified for. And if it wasn't for the SOPs that stood by him year after year advocating for him, he wouldn't have graduated. So I want to thank personally all the SOPs in the district that have touched his life and my life, and just, I want the board to realize how much these people have made such an impact. It's on the students you forget about, the students that don't get recognized, the ones that don't have the As, the ones that barely get by and pass. Those are the ones that we advocate for. And I want everyone to realize how much they put into it. They put their heart into every student they work with. I'd like to share a letter from a student that says, "Hello there. Since I was four years old, my SOP has helped me learn." She's a nice lady. It felt good when I learned the right words to say, and she never got mad. She has told me to try again. I was so excited to spend time with her because she made learning fun for me and the other kids in the class. She was very important to me. Thank you. From Patrick. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Smith, and I work at Stirling Park Elementary, and I have been working as an SOP since nineteen ninety-five. And, um, I love my job, and I, um, just, I agree that we should be compensated comparable to our peers. So, um, I am here, I volunteered to read a letter. This is a letter that a parent wrote, um, and she said, "The speech program in Seminole County Public Schools helped my daughter get to the next milestone. Because we had licensed and well-trained pathologists in our A-plus district, she was able to be evaluated properly and get the help she needed early on. Our children are our future. It's important that we pay speech pathologists what they deserve and at the levels of their professional counterparts, and it be adjusted for inflation in order to continue to recruit qualified individuals to take on these roles. Thank you for your time." That was Anne Pham.
Hello, my name is Sasha Ruiz, and I've been an SOP in Seminole County for the last seven years. Your speech-language pathologists make a huge impact on student outcomes, and I'm here to share one experience. Lila began receiving speech therapy at eighteen months old because family, friends, and her pediatrician could not understand what she was trying to say. When her family moved to Seminole County when she was two years old, her former speech therapist recommended she be evaluated at a center in a county outside of ours. The therapist visited Lila at her home, and then she was evaluated at the center, where they said she was too busy to talk. The therapist and her team closed Lila's case. Her parents left that center feeling lost because they knew their daughter was struggling to communicate. It wasn't until she changed pediatricians that her family found out about services available through Seminole County Public Schools. At this point, Lila was three years old. The Seminole County SOP met with Lila. She had educational games, art, and Play-Doh out for Lila to explore. The SOP was able to notice Lila's speech issue by engaging with her as she played and by sitting with her and doing fun flashcards. Then that SOP provided her parents with several ideas on how to help her as they waited to determine eligibility. Once she was found eligible, her parents felt comfortable dropping her off at Heathrow Elementary Weekly for her speech therapy sessions with her Seminole County SOP, who was always cheerful at drop-off and pickup. It was clear to her parents that being an SOP was her passion, and they were very thankful for her. She made an impact on Lila, and to this day, Lila still has two items from the treasure box there, a donkey from Shrek and a coin that says "Caught Being Good." Lila is now eleven years old and continues to receive speech therapy today in Seminole County Public Schools, and her family is grateful to her SOPs and their techniques to help children in our county. Stories like this are not unique. Your SOPs work every day with your students with a speech or language impairment individually and in small groups, usually for years at a time. The relationships we build with students and their families are crucial to student success. We must act now to retrain and recruit SOPs to Seminole County to ensure that our students receive the services they need to access their free and appropriate public education. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, Chairman, and the School Board. Um, I do have a parent letter to read, but I do have some notes that I'd like to say on behalf for myself as well. Um, my name is Ayman Dowdally, and I'm a current speech-language pathologist in Seminole County. My dream has always been to be an SOP since I was thirteen years old, as I watched my brother receive therapy, um, in New York. In two thousand and three, I graduated with my bachelor's degree at UCF in Communication Sciences and Disorders, and there was not one job available in Seminole County that August. I started my career in Osceola County and finally found a long-term subposition after a lot of work with Kathy Durnford. Fast forward nineteen years later, and now SCPS has about sixteen open positions on the hotline, and several of my fellow colleagues have left us to go to Osceola County this year because Osceola just increased their starting salary for SOPs to sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars base pay, plus years of experience added to that. We deserve better. You heard my fellow SOPs saying thirty-nine percent. But there are many more of us because our ESC children need more of us. I come from a school that has over a hundred and ninety ESC kids, and about a hundred and twenty of them are speech and language. That is over sixty percent of our school with speech and language. I'd like to read a letter from a parent, Samantha Taylor, who's the owner of Lake Mary Life Magazine. Several of us have gotten to work with her and her children. When my son started public school, or the public school system, he was just three years old but had almost no words. He was diagnosed with apraxia and worked every day with an SOP in his pre-K disabilities program. Within a year and a half, he went from speech of just a one-year-old to being right on par with his classmates. This didn't just happen. It was because of several dedicated, creative, talented women who worked with him, sent him notes, and came up with creative ideas to get him to make sounds. They thought way outside the box and changed the trajectory of my son's life. Currently, my daughter is about to enter third grade. She has an articulation issue and is working with the SOP at her public school. That dedicated woman sadly just retired. She had to work her magic with a group of kids in small increments of time, and these kids all had different issues, so she had to simultaneously conduct speech therapy with several kids with all varying exceptionalities and needs. I would argue that this is one of the most challenging jobs in education. SOPs work their magic every single day and should be treated fairly with compensation and benefits. If we lose the great SOPs in our A-rated school district, we have lost way more than we could ever imagine. They literally give our kids a voice. Thank you.
Katie Talladay, followed by Heather Ortiz, followed by Catherine Claxton.
Good evening. My name's Katie Talladay. I'm a speech-language pathologist at Seminole County Public Schools, um, and I have been for the last nine years. I'm going to be reading a parent letter. My seven-year-old son started karate this week. At his very first session, the instructor came over and gushed to his father and I about how excited she would be to teach him, dubbing him "a little adult" in how he spoke and interacted with her. It's far from the first time I've received this compliment from Patrick. It would surprise most people to learn that at the age of two, Patrick wasn't throwing around "no" like other toddlers. He wasn't fumbling through "ball" or "kitty" or any of the other staples that should be emerging at that time. At three, he could barely mumble "mama" and pair that with a few ASL phrases we'd managed to teach him, so we could help, so we could try to understand, so we could ease the frustration he felt at not being able to communicate. My bright and eager conversationalists would absolutely not be the boy he is today if not for the absolute rock star speech-language pathologists we've had the pleasure of working with and their patient and thorough intervention. As a parent, it's difficult to watch your child struggle. It's terrible to know that your child is trying to communicate their needs and wishes but just doesn't have the tools to do so. After enrolling him through speech services at the school, I felt like we finally had a way to get him those tools. I felt like there was finally someone in my corner, as a parent, helping him push through whatever blockage was preventing him from saying everything I knew he was so eager to express to us. And there was an almost immediate change in my little boy. Gone was the frustration and hurt that could be seen on his face every time we couldn't understand what he was trying to tell us. The stubbornness that seemed to prevent him working through these issues with me simply wasn't there when he'd spend time with his teacher each week. And suddenly, the sounds and small words that were ever on the tip of his tongue began to make their way through. He didn't just enjoy seeing his SOP each week. He downright thrived in doing so. It's hard to understand the importance of such services unless you yourself have used or needed them. But I know without a doubt, Patrick would not be the student or child he is today without the help and support of his various speech-language pathologists that have provided him with his services and me throughout the years. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Heather Ortiz. I am a speech-language pathologist at Midway Elementary School. I've been in the county for thirteen years. Um, and I'm going to be reading input that was shared by a parent of a Seminole County student. Um, I have three children with autism spectrum disorder, ages eleven, seven, and two. My older children attend, um, an elementary school in Seminole County, and we've had the pleasure of working with one of the speech-language pathologists for years for speech and language impairment in addition to their primary exceptionality of ASD through their IEPs. My youngest son also went through SCPS ESC pre-K program at another Seminole County Public School, and I feel very strongly that without the support of an SOP with a minimum qualification of clinical fellow SOP, it would be unlikely that they would have been able to make the academic progress that they have and participate in free and appropriate public education in a general education classroom. In my opinion, the qualification of a certificate of clinical competence SOP is necessary to meet even the least restrictive needs of many children with speech and language impairments, and especially for children with ASD. As a parent of three children with ASD, I have a unique depth of experience working with numerous SOPs. I understand and appreciate the experience that the speech-language pathologist has with her credentialing of CCC-SLP and years of experience. I am very thankful my children have the immeasurable benefit of working on their speech and language IEP goals with the speech and language pathologist. I have seen their speech and language flourish with her support. Not only does she provide excellent Not only does she provide excellent speech and language services, but has the experience to understand many of the nuances of ASD that is not possible without a significant amount of educational and professional training. She is a trusted and vital component of their education.
Order. Katherine Claxton, followed by Jennifer Truesdale, followed by Gina Dargel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Claxton, and I am speaking today as a parent on behalf of the speech therapist here today. I would like to share my personal experience about my son with you. My son is now a second grader, but his journey within Seminole County Public Schools began when he was just three years old. He was considered severely speech delayed, and we had actually been doing services since he was two. But I began taking him to an elementary school twice a week to have speech and language therapy with the school's SLP for early intervention services. I remember our first meeting quite vividly. She had asked me how many words he was speaking, twenty, maybe fifty, and I kind of froze, and I said, "No, maybe only a handful." She handed me a sticky "no" and asked me to write down all the words that he could say. I wrote down six words, just six. And for those unfamiliar, three-year-olds should be able to speak in three to four-word sentences and maybe have hundreds of words in their vocabulary at this time. Heather Ortiz worked with my son for three full school years before he started kindergarten at a different elementary school here in Seminole County. Mrs. Ortiz built an incredible and special relationship with my son and always took time to speak with me every week about what they were working on and his progress. She gave me guidance and feedback on things to focus on at home with him between sessions as well. I hands-down credit her for teaching my son to talk. She has left a lasting impact on our lives and actually has become a very good friend of mine. It seemed like a long few years, but he walked into his kindergarten classroom in 2020, ready, capable, and full of confidence. He not only survived but thrived, and I credit his next speech therapist, Lynn Stumpf, who I didn't know was going to be here today, for taking him over the finish line. Halfway through his first-grade year, he was able to become a speech therapist graduate and no longer has an IEP at all, when he could barely talk at three years old. This would not have been possible without the services provided by these professional and licensed therapists. They say to parents of children with speech delays that a speech delay is not a representation of intelligence. And as parents, we know this. We know how much our children know and understand, but as they enter the school system, they can get swallowed up and left behind. These therapy services are essential for our children and our community. Just real quickly, I would like to add something about the post-COVID implications as well. Referrals were delayed, treatment was disrupted or discontinued in some cases, and interventions were modified, which has had a lot of negative effects for students who already receive services and now has sent many more students to SLPs than ever before. Research supports there are significant delays in critical language skills in children right now, and our schools are already seeing rising numbers in students needing services. SLPs are now at the front lines of helping these children close these gaps that occurred during the pandemic. So if there was ever a time for them to win this fight and be recognized equally, it is most certainly now. I am here today to tell you that they are worth what they are asking for. They are just as valuable and deserve the same compensation as the other therapist in the district. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jennifer Truesdale. I'm a speech-language pathologist working in Seminole County for twenty-three years. In addition, I provided in and outpatient therapy to adults with traumatic brain injury, dysphasia, aphasia, and dysarthria. I've also worked in pediatric settings to provide therapy to children with hearing loss, cleft palate, motor speech disorders, disfluencies, and auditory processing disorder. I'm telling this not to boast, but to highlight the wide skill set and scope of knowledge of SLPs working in this district. We are nationally certified skilled healthcare professionals, yet in this district, we are not compensated equally or fairly to our occupational and physical therapist colleagues. When I began my career with Seminole County, it was the county to work for. Sadly, it's fallen behind in its treatment and compensation of therapists. It's no longer the top choice for SLPs to seek employment, as evidenced by the current number of open SLP positions that the district is struggling to fill. Osceola County recently approved a new pay scale to align SLP OT and PT salaries. As a result, fourteen of our Seminole SLPs have left to accept employment in Osceola. You can't blame them. A first-year SLP in Osceola will now make over five thousand dollars more annually than I will with twenty-three years of experience. This is not acceptable, especially in a district that claims to be the best. Why is this important? When experienced SLPs leave, it affects the quality of therapy our students receive. This reduces student learning gains, test scores, school and district ratings, and decreases funding. Thirty-nine percent of Seminole's ESC population receives speech-language therapy, compared to only five percent receiving occupational or physical therapy. SLPs impact the most students and generate the most funding. We have equivalent, if not more, education and training, and yet there remains a disparity in our salaries. We, your district SLPs, would like to ask why. In order to retain and recruit highly-trained, nationally-certified SLPs, we are asking you to compensate us fairly and equally. In closing, please allow me to share the following letter written by one of my former students. Dear Mrs. Truesdale, I'm not sure if you remember me, but after graduating from the University of Notre Dame this past May, I have been thinking a lot about the people who have positively impacted my life. Thank you so much for all of your time and effort in helping me with my speech impediment. Because of your efforts, I've been able to give presentations, interview for college and jobs, and articulate my thoughts in a way people can understand. We don't get where we are without the help of others, and I just wanted to express how thankful I am for all of your help. Thank you so much for your time and allowing us to discuss our concerns with you today.
Hi, my name is Regina Dargel, and I've been a speech therapist with Seminole County Public Schools for twenty years. Let's talk about the elephant in the room: funding. How are we going to give SLPs a raise? Funding is always an issue, right? It makes me think about when my daughter played softball in high school, right here in Seminole County. There really wasn't a lot of funding for softball, especially when you compare that to the boys' football team. We were always told that the football team brought in more money, so they were able to be supported more. You know, everybody loves Friday Night Lights. Their ticket sales generate more revenue, their concession sales made more, Parent Booster gave more, yada, yada. There was always more money to support football because they generated more money. So if we apply that same logic, our sheer number of SLPs and our speech-language students being at thirty-nine percent of the ESC population compared to OT at four percent and PT at less than one percent, we are generating more money from state funding. Let's also talk about, we bring in more money due to the Certified School Medicaid Match Program. The handbook can be found online. And I did a sort of hypothetical scenario where I calculated only twenty percent of the speech and language ESC population. I don't have the exact number of students because, you know, confidentiality. But at just twenty percent of the thirty-nine percent of the speech and language students, we would hypothetically be bringing in about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Funding. I have heard over my twenty years the excuse for not approving a raise that makes us comparable to our OT and PT counterparts is because, and I quote, "There are just too many SLPs." Too many SLPs, but nobody says anything about us bringing in more funding. And we SLPs never tell parents, "I'm sorry, I can't add your child to my therapy schedule because I just have too many students." We would never do that because we love our job. We value our job. We hope that you love us and value us. We have all heard that Osceola County, not only did they just get a raise, but they start their SLPs at sixty-two thousand, around sixty-two thousand five hundred. They also count years of service, experience from other counties, if you worked at a skilled nursing facility, private practice. Polk County just came in. They also approved a raise for their speech pathologist to align with their peers, starting at sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-one. Orange County is feeling this impact as they have over twenty SLP positions that are currently unfilled. We are feeling this impact. Currently, we have six full-time and nine and a half part-time positions opened. I love working for Seminole County. We're ranked number one in Central Florida. Let's make this the year, the year that Seminole County finally sees our worth and that we continue to keep and bring in highly-qualified speech-language pathologists. Thank you for your time.
Kimberly Bowen, followed by Michelle Manella, followed by Mr. Kenneth Bentley.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Bowen, and I'm a speech-language pathologist working in this district for the past nineteen years. As you guys have already heard, in the Central Florida area, Osceola Public Schools is leading the way in putting an end to the wage discrepancies between speech-language pathologists and other allied health professionals. As an SLP with twenty-six years of experience, I will be making less in Seminole County this year than a first-year SLP in Osceola County. They start their career making over thirty-five hundred dollars more than I will make in twenty-six years of experience within this district. That's shameful. It's time that Seminole County, the number-one A-rated district in the Central Florida region, step up and offer equitable wages for all therapists. The disparity and stipends when compared to our other allied health professionals is unexplainable. Being told "there are just too many of you" just doesn't justify the inequity in compensation. It's time to make a change. SLPs generate additional funding for the district. Thirty-nine percent of all students identified with an exceptionality are being provided services by speech-language pathologists. There are only ninety-four of a hundred and thirty positions that seventy-two percent currently filled with clinically-certified, nationally-recognized speech and language pathologists. Seminole County still has greater than fifteen positions for the current school year that begins next week and an insufficient number of applicants. The district recently lost fourteen clinically-certified clinicians, highly-qualified, to Osceola County. This is why Seminole County needs to move forward, eliminating the discrepancies in wages and align SLPs with OTs and PTs. This will go a long way in recruiting and retaining highly-qualified, clinically-certified, and nationally-recognized speech-language pathologists. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Michelle Manella. As you guys are well aware, there have been a lot of safety issues over the last year that parents and students and staff alike deeply care about, from Oviedo's homecoming dance ending in panic to many, many students being arrested for fighting at various high schools, vandalization of the bathrooms. All these things are serious issues, and it's just a small snapshot of the issues that our district grapples with daily. And it's no wonder that student performance is falling. Right here in our district, we've seen a two-percent decline just this last year in how many third graders are able to meet state standards for reading. Even fewer are considered proficient, and statewide, that number has fallen to a mere twenty-five percent. We are failing our children. We must provide a safe and academically-rich environment for them, or we have failed at our most basic responsibility to them. The academic and safety data both seem to bear witness to the fact that we have done indeed exactly that. How do we fix this situation? One excellent option is the Coach Erin Feis Guardian Program, a school safety bill that was signed into law in 2019 and is funded by the state. Currently, forty-five other school districts across Florida are participating. The bill allows districts to decide whether to participate, but Seminole County has not decided to partake of this excellent program. We often hear at these SCPS board meetings about students who feel unsafe, bullied, or harassed. This is unacceptable, and I urge you to enforce the anti-bullying policies we have in place to protect these students. I truly hope you will also take to heart the pleas of the SLPs you've heard tonight. Please prioritize our ESC students' needs and pay these important educators salaries commensurate with other districts in Central Florida at the very minimum. It's essential that the setbacks that occurred with the mandatory masking and other COVID measures be addressed immediately. Funds for this should be readily available, considering how many administrative positions were created this year. Thank you for all you do to serve the community, and I and my friends look forward to partnering with you for a successful academic year.
Good evening. Kenneth Bentley, representing the Barbershop Conversation in Goldsboro Front Porch. Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Board Members, Attorney, and also the Employer of the Year. Good evening. The first thing I want to do is say thank you to Deputy Superintendent Wyson, Faison, and also Rice. You've been in the community all year long. It's not overlooked what you've been doing, and I know what you're going to continue to do. Also, I'd like to thank the School Board on the partnership that you've made with Commissioner Carrie Wiggins, one of your employees, and he's also a District Two Commissioner in Sanford. We'll be at the West Side Center this Thursday, and what you're doing is great. You're going to bring out the red dining staff. You're going to bring out transportation. You're going to have people talk about E-pathways. You're going to have principals from the schools in the area, and that's going to be great for the parents in the Sanford community. So when you start school on August tenth, we don't have cars lined up and people fussing and cussing because they don't know what to do or where to go. So that's some good preventive maintenance that we're doing this Thursday. Everybody in this room is invited. It's not just for District Two. It's not just for Sanford. It's for everybody. So please, please, please come. Thanks for that partnership, and you got a jewel in Commissioner Wiggins. Got a real jewel. I'm glad he works for the system during the day. Also, you know what I'm going to say, and I know you've been working on it: Black history. We've got to have Black History, African-American Studies in the schools, middle schools and high schools. And remember what I said. None of you gorgeous ladies were born in the seventeen hundreds. You had nothing to do with anything that happened in the seventeen hundreds or the eighteen hundreds. It's just history. Also, I want the kids, like I said last meeting, to know about Ellis Island. That's history. We can't be ashamed of something that happened. It's just history, and we talk about it. We talk about it intelligently, and we get on. And I want to be clear: We have never, ever advocated for CRT. We're not hateful. We don't want to teach hate. Don't put that with anything that I ever come up here and talk about because we've never advocated for CRT. We educated for Black History, African-American Studies. Also, I want to say thank you to two people I've been with a long time. I met them about twelve, thirteen years ago. After I left them, I got a bunch of car signs, and I was told that they would be two great additions to the School Board. Myself and Commissioner Velma Williams took them around Sanford. We introduced them to Pastor Murthy, Pastor Wright, Pastor Rooker, and we don't regret it one day. I want to thank Dr. Kyle DeRone. I want to thank you too, Ms. Almond, and I'm going to tell you the truth. Thank you, but your check is not in the mail.
That concludes public comment for this evening. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for the consent agenda? Yes, that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation on student discipline? Yes, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from June twenty, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent, do you have a report? Yes, Chairman, I do. It is a read-only report and is included in your agenda book.
It is a read-only report and is included in your agenda book.
Okay. Have I missed something?
Point of, point of order, point of order, Madam Chair? With regards to an item that was removed for separate consideration, I believe it was six oh?
We didn't pull it for separate consideration.
Or we just pulled it.
We just, we got a, we requested a volunteer for the RFQ, and Member Kraus offered.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction.
Does that satisfy?
Yes.
Okay. 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 Board committee updates. Real quick, if we just want to go down role call, Member Kraus?
I attended the Community Alliance meeting at the Sheriff's Office, and that was the first meeting, I think, in two years because of the pandemic. And they are looking at possibly teaming with the Children's Cabinet. I'll have Children's Cabinet meeting next week. I do want to announce that all of our community vendors, mental health supports, resources will be at Seminole Town Center on August sixth. The Children's Cabinet has arranged, there's water safety information, there's, I think they're trying to do a little scavenger hunt for the kids to go table-to-table and get information. So I urge the community to go out to Seminole Town Center. It's tax-free shopping that day, too. That was good planning. And, and Business Advisory Board is next week, so I'll have a report next month.
Member Almond?
Thank you. I've not had any committees meet since our last meeting, but I want to commend Superintendent and all the administrators, Grace and Jill, for a fantastic leadership conference last Friday. It was really outstanding. And Ms. Beaman, there was a question made about admin positions that many of them were added, and I believe you changed many job titles, and I'm only aware of Dr. Cummings having a new role, you know, supporting.
That is correct. There have not been any district-level additions in my tenure, except for the one role by Dr. Cummings, and that is an ESAR-funded role.
And that will expire in a year or two years?
It will, we have enough to continue until the ESAR funding runs out, and then we will make a decision as it relates to the return on investment.
Thank you. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Almond. Member Calderon?
None of my committees met over the last month, but I did want to share with the community. I was thrilled to attend the grand opening of the Sharing Center expansion of Oasis, and that is a great benefit that perhaps some of our families will be utilizing in the future, but again, it's a great sign of how this community collaborates together. I also wanted to thank publicly Croombs Academy for very quickly pivoting to welcome our governor to Croombs Academy that day to talk about civics education, along with our civics teacher who was there and some of our students that represented us very well. And thank you, Mike, and all your high school principals, and everybody who worked so hard on our summer school graduation. It's always heartwarming to see these kids that, for many different reasons of their own, finally graduated from Seminole County Public Schools, and I was very thrilled with that. And I also just wanted to say thank you very much to Addition Financial, who today revealed that phenomenal makeover of a classroom of one of our fantastic teachers at Markham Woods Middle. It will really help that educational environment for those special children crossing through her door each day. And that concludes.
Member Sanchez?
I had the zoo meeting last week, and for any of you that don't know, we have a new CEO, Richard Glover. He's awesome. If you want to follow him on Instagram, just head over to the Central Florida Zoo, and you can follow Richard Glover and his podcasts. We have some new animals there, the Hardlequin sheep that we just took on loan from the Memphis Zoo. It's a sheep that's not taller than twenty-five inches. It's pretty small, really popular. It's going to be in the barnyard buddy area. We also have three orphaned Mexican spider monkeys that were actually trafficked over here, so they're from three different troops and stuff like that, family, should I say. And we want you to be able to go to the zoo and enjoy all the different activities there for your family. There's the Family Fun Night on August twenty-sixth, but just check out the website because there's something pretty much every day that you can do there. It's a great place to get a yearly pass as well, and I'll be attending the retreat this weekend, heading over to Brevard Zoo to do some comparison and see what other things we need to add to ours, but right now, we're doing great with it. Other committees, we really haven't met on, and also wanted to thank all the SLP teachers that are here. Me, my, should I say, both my boys struggled verbal dyspraxia, nonverbal, all graduated. Fiona understands, sorry. And I couldn't thank you all enough for everything you do day in and day out, and working with my grandbaby now, who was born with a cleft lip and palate, just preparing for her palate surgery next month, August second, a couple weeks. So, a lot. And I don't think a lot of people realize everything that you do day in and day out, so thank you.
Order, please.
I haven't had any committee meetings either, but wanted to just recognize and thank all of the community partners out there that are doing back-to-school events to help get backpacks and school supplies, clothing, shoes, anything you can imagine that our families need. Our community partners are just stepping up in a tremendous way, and everywhere I turn, I'm seeing a new community event popping up to get those resources in the hands of our kids and teachers. So thank you to everyone out there who really come out in full force this time of year to, to support everyone coming back to school. I hope that everyone had a really wonderful summer, that you took time to recuperate, rest, regenerate yourselves, make great memories, and have a wonderful year ahead. And that is all, so this meeting is adjourned.